Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mr. Solera?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Here.
Mr. Felber's absent?
Yes. Okay, as for, oh, except for Mr. Felber's absence, would you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the free government, to which it stands, to our nation under God, indivisible, with the breathing of justice for all.
Okay, so, as Mr. Felber would always say when he's here, for people that we have, if you're in the hallways, find a seat, or if you're in the aisles, we can't have people standing in the aisles for fire code. So I don't think that we have that many people that we don't have enough seats, so I appreciate your cooperation in that endeavor. First and foremost, I'd like to wish our board president, Mr. Felber, a speedy recovery from injuries that he sustained over the weekend due to these injuries. He's unable to be here, so I will preside in his absence. Now, as adults, from time to time, we try to perform athletic feats that we used to be able to do when we were younger. Apparently, Mr. Felber, his body reminded him that he was not able to do the things that he used to do, and so he's not able to be here. But in all seriousness, we hope that he heals and he's able to join us in the near future. So, aside from that, wow, it's at that time of the year where we got kids that are taking field trips to Cedar Point and got spring sports that are wrapping up, and we're going to be preparing for graduation. Wow, where did the time go? I'd like to acknowledge and congratulate the teachers that are being recommended for continuing contracts, as well as those who have attained the status of master teacher. In this day and age of accountability, teachers are often the ones under attack. Professional is, and the profession can sometimes seem like it's thankless. However, it's moments like this in this evening that we make it an honor to recognize teachers for their commitment, and what they do, and what you are able to provide our children day in and day out. And without you, we would not be able to achieve the level of success that we've been able and so fortunate to enjoy over the last few years. Additionally, I want to extend well wishes to our retirees, who will also be, will be recognizing this evening. And while you may be leaving the district, the impressions that you have made on our children will be long lasting. And although you won't be in our classrooms, I'm sure you'll be anxious to pursue other passions like traveling, enjoying family, or just relaxing. So, for me, retirement is a ways off, as I've been in education for quite some time, not enough time that I can look forward to retirement. So, often when I talk to my colleagues who are retired, I'll let them know that I want to be like you, just like you when I grow up. So, for those who are retiring, I want to be just like you when I grow up. So, but nonetheless, I want to thank you, we as a board want to thank you for your service. So, following the superintendent's report, we will have a short recess, where we'll have light refreshments out there, and time to kind of celebrate, and, you know, savor this moment. So, without further delay, I'll turn the meeting over to Mrs. Powers for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Good evening, Board of Education. It is always such a great event when we can celebrate the successes of our staff. Now typically, we have a lot of students here and their families, and this evening is a little bit different, and we're celebrating you, our staff members. You make it happen here every single day, and many of you are exiting employment, always will be a member of our Tiger family, but tonight it's all about you. And before we get to that, I do have a couple of things to share with our community. You know, Board of Education, our class of 2016 is about ready to go. And last Friday night, May 13th, the students enjoyed prom. It was at the Signature of Solon, and I want to thank class advisor Nikki Swinning, our senior class officers, and our fabulous staff chaperones who were there to make sure that our kids had a great time safe. They looked fabulous, and we'll be posting some pictures on the website tomorrow of the students. I also want to congratulate Mrs. Houston, who's here this evening as a master teacher representative, but last night we had the senior symposium at the high school, and many of our seniors took an opportunity to step away from the high school the last couple of weeks of the year, and they were provided opportunities to be shadows, to have internships in many, many places in our community and abroad. And I was telling Mrs. Houston that I had an opportunity to listen to Marissa Baker, one of the graduating seniors, talk about her experience at Cleveland Clinic, where she actually got to observe a brain surgery. And my goodness, that is an opportunity that doesn't come every day, and now she is convinced that her future career will be all about in the medical field. So we certainly do thank our community partners for providing those kinds of wonderful opportunities for our students. And Donna, thank you for pulling it all together. Every year it's better and better, and this year it was top notch as usual. On Monday, May 23rd, our Twinsburg Ministerial Association will be hosting Baccalaureate over at St. Cosmas and Damian Church at seven o'clock. An opportunity for those who are interested in attending with our class of 2016, for a special way to begin a very special week. So that's Monday, the 23rd at seven o'clock. And we do want to thank members of the Twinsburg Ministerial Association. Every year they reach out to the school district and want to do something special for our graduates, and it's always nice to see the students and their families gather the evening before commencement, which by the way, is Tuesday, May 24th, and that's at E.J. Thomas Hall at the University of Akron at seven o'clock PM. And again, we want to thank Mrs. Houston and all of the teachers, Mrs. Tringo, the administrative staff, everyone who's pulling together the last minute details, and there are a million of them, as our students are getting ready to commence onto bigger things. Also, Board of Education, I want to thank the members of our Tiger community who gathered at RB Chamberlain Middle School on Sunday. Mrs. Davis, thank you for coming out with your family. In two and a half hours, there was a bag rolling event in which 10,000 grocery bags were now prepared for delivery for the Fill a Bag, Feed a Family Initiative, and that's going to be happening on Sunday, June 5th. If you happen to reside in Twinsburg, in the township, or in Reminderville, on Sunday, June 5th, you will have a surprise at your front door. It'll be a grocery bag that'll have some information about how you can help. And basically, this is a food drive to support the Emergency Assistance Center and their pantry over the summer months. You know, a lot of things happen during the school year, we have a lot of food drives, but what we have heard from our friends at the Emergency Assistance Center is in the summertime, their shelves are pretty bare, and they're still a great need. And so, we will be supporting the Emergency Assistance Center through the Second Annual Fill a Bag, Feed a Family event. Grocery bags will be delivered to your door on Sunday, June 5th, and then the following Saturday, a whole army of community volunteers will be out to pick up those bags and to deliver them to a warehouse, where they'll be checked in and put on the pantry shelves for those who are in need. So thank you in advance for your assistance with that, and for the Tiger families that were out on Sunday. It was really a great event. And again, couldn't do it without a lot of folks coming together. And it wasn't just the adults that came out, we had kids of all ages there, and a lot of our students got community service hours to participate, so thank you for that. Our spring sports are still raring to go. It has been a fabulous spring sport season, if you've been paying attention to the website, or to Twitter, or to the local papers. You know that our kids have been doing a fantastic job, and tonight we have a huge baseball game against Nordonia, and so we would all be there if we weren't here. Mr. Fantone's not here because he's there, but we expect to be getting some text messages is how the kids are doing. So they're still going strong, and so is our track and field teams, and so good luck to our Tigers as they finish out the season. For the rest of our students, it's not even that I have to say this, but the last day of school, I can't believe this is next Friday, May 27th, how did that happen? It just seems like we started and we're at the other end of things. And the first day of school for the 16-17 school year is Wednesday, August 17th. So, fast and furious, and it's been a fantastic year, and I just am so appreciative of all the effort behind the school district, our parents, our community, and of course, the fabulous staff that make it happen every day. Monday, May 30th is Memorial Day, and as always, we will pause from our classrooms and our duties, and we will pause to reflect on the men and women who have supported us in the armed forces and who are currently supporting us. And so please take some time to reflect and to be thankful for the country that we live in, because it's, because of all of that effort, the men and women who serve the country and who have that, we have all the opportunities that we do. And so we thank, we thank them in all that they've done. So this evening, as Mr. Curtis has indicated, we have a lot of people to celebrate. So I'm going to ask my partner in crime tonight, and that's Mrs. McKinney, to come forward, and we're going to get underway, and we have a lot of folks to celebrate. Oh, and before I begin, I need to tell you where Mr. Welker is. Talk about my other partner in crime. His child, Ryan, is graduating from preschool tonight. And so he is off at his own graduation celebration, and promises me he'll be here if he can, but he's a busy dad tonight and had a reason not to be here, so that's why Chad is absent from his usual place. So, this evening, Mrs. McKinney and I are going to be recognizing a number of fantastic teachers, and we're going to begin our presentation talking about our teachers who have reached the status of a continuing contract. This is an important part of being an educator. It doesn't come easily, and these individuals that we're celebrating tonight have been in the classroom for many years and are very dedicated to the craft of being an educator. They keep the students front and center, they make sure that their instruction is the very best that it can be, and they are just stellar representatives of our school district. So this evening, we're going to be introducing each of them separately, and we're going to say a little bit about each of them. And so I wanted to invite forward our five building principals, so they can greet and shake hands. Mrs. Farthing and Mrs. Trapegen as well, and also our Board of Education, if you would like to greet our continuing contract recommendations, that would be awesome.
And as your name is called, wonderful teachers, if you would kindly come on up and receive your congratulations. We would like the entire class to remain up front, and we'll take some photo opportunities once all of you have been recognized. And so it's my great pleasure to begin by introducing Mr. Mike Bell. Please come forward, Mike. Mike is a social studies teacher at Twinsburg High School. He is also our varsity head coach of our Tiger football team at the high school. And when Mike was asked why he became a teacher, he indicated that his father was a teacher, and that he and the other influential teachers that Mike had in his career as a student really seemed to enjoy what they did every day. And so this joy for teaching was something that Mike wanted to also have as part of his career path, thus he became a teacher. When I asked him about sharing a favorite classroom memory, Mike indicated that there have been many great memories, and it would be difficult to pick only one, but his most joyful moments are watching students at that aha moment, and seeing them develop into the fine young adults. What are three qualities of a teacher, a good teacher, according to Mike, and those qualities are having empathy, being kind, and having a desire to serve others, which we really believe in here in our school district. And when asked, how do Mike's students know that he loves to be a teacher? He says, "My love for teaching is revealed in the passion and energy I bring to the classroom, and the smile he wears every day to school." And in his spare time, Mike enjoys spending time with his wonderful family, and you'll see them in a lot of football games, they're very supportive of what Mike does here, and they enjoy all types of outdoor activities as well. And any other concluding comments? Mr. Bell indicated that he's just grateful for the opportunity to be a part of our Twinsburg School District family. Mr. Mike Bell.
The next recipient of the continuing contract is Julie Humble. Julie is a social studies teacher at Twinsburg High School. She has taught in the Twinsburg City School District for five years. When asked why she became a teacher, she said she became a teacher because she had a social studies teacher, who not only was a great classroom teacher, but also took students on spring break trips to Europe. She was lucky enough to travel with this group to Italy her senior year. That trip opened up the world to her and inspired her to become a lifelong learner and educator. Education is life changing. She lives for the light bulb moments and to see her students interested in exploring new topics. A favorite classroom memory? She is an extreme fan and graduate of the Ohio State University. A few years ago, one of her senior students came running down the hall with her acceptance letter to Ohio State, excuse me, the Ohio State University. She shouted, "I am going to be a Buckeye," and gave Miss Humble a big hug. She was so proud and couldn't wait to share the news with Miss Humble. She felt honored to be a part of such an exciting moment in that student's life. She believes the three most important qualities of a successful teacher are dedication, compassion, and drive. She believes her students knows that she loves to teach because she is prepared for class and up and moving around the classroom throughout the lesson. She's enthusiastic about the topics covered and tries to get the students excited as well. She likes to laugh, smile, and make the lessons fun, even if it means embarrassing herself and making corny jokes that get a few eye rolls from her students. In her spare time, she loves to spend time with her one-year-old daughter, her husband, and her extended family. Closing comments, she is so grateful for the honor of a continuing contract. She loves teaching and being a part of the Tiger family. Congratulations, Julie.
Next, I'd like to introduce Libby Littler. Libby has been a teacher at Twinsburg High School and interventionist for the past 26 years, and when asked why Libby became a teacher, she said that she believed in becoming a teacher, and it has been her heart's desire since childhood. Both her mom and her aunt were both teachers. One of her favorite classroom memories was when she taught fourth grade, and her fourth graders turned their classroom into a tropical rainforest during a unit that included math, language arts, and science. She also had a set of identical twins for the very first time that year, so that was something that was very memorable to her. Mrs. Littler's thought about a very highly qualified teacher includes the characteristics of having great communication, be a good listener, and also being creative. And when asked, "How do you know your students know that you love to teach?", she responded, "My students know that I am here for them and that I genuinely care about their outcomes." And in her spare time, Mrs. Littler loves to spend time with her family, and she loves to be out in the sun and walking outdoors, and she has a 115-pound black lab. I think the lab must walk you, instead of you walking it. That's a large dog. And any other comments? Mrs. Littler said, it's always, she's always considered Twinsburg to be her school and her community. She has watched her students grow up here, and now she is seeing their children come through our school district. She's always felt grateful to be a teacher in the Twinsburg City School District, doing what she believes fulfills her purpose in life. Congratulations, Libby.
Our next candidate for a continuing contract is Cheryl Linden, who is a school guidance counselor at Dodge Intermediate School, and she's been here in the Twinsburg School District for three years. Why did she become a counselor? She wanted to give children a voice and make sure they have a place to talk and have unconditional support. Her favorite classroom memory is transitioning the third grade students to Dodge Intermediate School. The three most important qualities of a successful counselor are patience, empathy, and optimism. Her students know that she loves to be a counselor because she is always willing to listen and help, and she is always smiling. In her spare time, she likes spending time with her family. Congratulations, Cheryl Linden.
Next, I'd like to introduce Matt Rakowski. Mr. Rakowski is one of our counselors at Twinsburg High School, and he is finishing up his second year. He had a continuing contract in his former school district, the South Yggdrasil Schools. And when asked why he became a counselor, Mr. Rakowski answered, "To help those who really needed it the most." His favorite memory is about the fact that not so long ago, over at Twinsburg High School, Mr. Rakowski engaged a group of students in an anti-bullying activity, and it was a handprint activity, and if you visit our website, you'll see the product of what was happening in that activity, and Matt is just really very, very proud of that work. The three most important characteristics of a school educator, according to Mr. Rakowski, would be an individual who advocates for students, someone who is caring, and somebody who is passionate about their work. And when asked, "How do you know students know that you love to work with them?", Matt answered, "You have to genuinely enjoy the opportunity to be with the students, and when you're genuine about that work with students, they know that you love being with them." And in his spare time, he enjoys spending it with his family, wonderful family. He loves being outdoors, and here's an old-fashioned word, he loves to tinker. Haven't seen that in print in a long time. Yes, tinkering, that's awesome. And any additional comments? He just indicated that he's truly thankful to be a member of the Tiger family. Congratulations, Matt.
Our next recipient of a continuing contract is Brian Vildbeck. Brian is a phys ed teacher at Dodge Intermediate School. He has been with the Twinsburg City School District for three years. And Mr. Vildbeck became a teacher because of the enjoyment and pride he takes in working with young people. He knew from an early age that he wanted a future in education. He grew up learning from some very special teachers and wanted to follow in their footsteps. A favorite memory or lesson he loves to teach is Whiffle Ball Unit, which takes place during the fourth quarter of the school year. The weather is always beautiful, which allows him to go outside with the students, and the students really enjoy it. He looks forward to the Whiffle Ball Unit every year. Mr. Vildbeck believes that the three most important qualities that a teacher must possess to be successful are having patience, a positive attitude, and the flexibility to adapt to difficult situations. When asked how his students know that he loves to teach, he said he believes that his students know that he loves to teach because of the energy and excitement he brings into the classroom. He always tries to smile and have fun during each class. He makes an effort to ensure that each student feels special and welcomed during their time in his class. In his spare time, he loves to be around family and friends. He also likes to be as active as possible in exercising, bike riding, and playing basketball. In closing remarks, this will be the completion of his six years of full-time phys ed teacher. He's also a member of the district's wellness committee and is currently the junior varsity boys' basketball coach at Twinsburg High School. Congratulations, Brian.
And I'd like to introduce Matt Whitting. Matt has been a high school chemistry and biology teacher, and he's finishing his ninth year at the high school. Before coming here, actually, he went to Fairless High School in Stark County. And as a teacher, wondering why he became a teacher, he said he enjoyed watching individuals experience success in something, and he knew that he was able to help, and that's, he likes helping students. He liked the idea that he would be able to work with individuals that could possibly have enough of a positive impact on the growth of those students. In college, his advisor presented the possibility of teaching based on his passion for science, as well as his interest in extracurricular activities, so he absolutely has picked the right profession. One of his favorite classroom memories are when his upperclassmen come back as alumni and visit and share with him what they have been doing in the world outside of Twinsburg High School, and he really appreciates understanding and hearing all about the amazing success of those alumni, and he appreciates them coming back and sharing that with him. According to Mr. Whitting, the three most important qualities of a successful teacher are having a passion for the subject matter, being, having an engaging personality, and building rapport with the students. He thinks that if students are excited to come to class and engage in a lesson, the rest will take care of itself. And he knows that his students understand that he loves to teach because they are always at his door, and his door is always open to them. It's an open door thing over at Mr. Whitting's classroom, and if they need assistance at anything or about anything, Matt indicates that he's the guy that's always happy to be there for them. In his spare time, he enjoys spending time with his wife and his two daughters, and when he's not at school or at football practice or with the guys, he's also has an interest in playing golf whenever he possibly can. And in final comments, Matt wrote that he still looks back and thinks about making the decision to leave his alma mater and to come to Twinsburg, and he is very happy that he made the move, and so are we. Mr. Matt Whitting.
Board of Education, it will be my pleasure later in the agenda, as you know, to recommend these outstanding educators for continuing contracts with the Twinsburg City School District. Teachers, this is a commitment that we have to you and vice versa that you have to us. Continuing contract status means that you're committed to the Twinsburg City School District, and we have that commitment to you, and we appreciate the interest that you have in making sure that our students are as successful as they possibly can be. So later in this evening's agenda, the Board of Education will take action on the recommendation for continuing contracts, and I know I'm a little early, but congratulations, and I wish you all the best. At this point, we will ask those of you who are up here to have a seat, and Mrs. McKinney is going to proceed with master teacher recognition.
Good evening, Mr. Curtis, Ms. Solera, Mrs. Davis, Mrs. Terrell Waldron, Mrs. Powers, and Mr. Aho. Thank you for allowing me time this evening to present our district's 2015-2016 master teachers. Over six years ago, Senate Bill 2 directed the Ohio Department of Education to create the Educator Standards Board. The Educator Standards Board was then required to develop a definition and criteria for the master teacher program, so that it could be used uniformly by all school districts throughout the state. In order to apply for consideration, teachers must hold the following eligibility requirements: Must hold a professional license or certificate. Must have taught at least seven years. Must work a minimum of 120 days. And must be currently working. I would like to introduce to you the members of the Master Teacher Committee. Committee members, when I call your name, please come up front to join me in congratulating the 2015-2016 master teachers. Committee member Kim Fink, representing Wilcox. Donna Houston, representing Twinsburg High School. Jennifer McHugh, representing Dodge Intermediate. Louise Tarango, representing Twinsburg High School as well. And I serve as the chairperson for the Master Teacher Committee. Teachers who are interested in applying for consideration had to submit a portfolio with evidence of mastery in teaching. Within the portfolios, teachers needed to demonstrate their eligibility for master teacher designation by indicating their exemplary mastery of the following criteria: consistent leadership, focused collaboration, distinguished teaching with a focus on students and the environment, distinguished teaching with a focus on content, instruction, and assessment, and proof of continued professional growth. Along with a written narrative, teachers needed to include evidence for each of these criteria in their master teacher portfolios. It is my pleasure to introduce this year's master teachers. As your name is called, please come forward to receive congratulations from the Master Teacher Committee, members of the administrative team, and the Board of Education and Mrs. Don't think she's in attendance. Ms. Ronda Albers, who teaches, oh, she's here, teaches reading at Wilcox. Russ Chapel teaches math at Twinsburg High School. Kristin DeHill, intervention specialist, Samuel Bissell. Nancy Drain teaches Spanish at Twinsburg High School. Kim Fink. Kim is doing double duty here. She's a committee member, and she received the designation as well. Teaches first grade at Wilcox. Sharon Mosenko teaches art at Twinsburg High School. Molly Sauter teaches science at Twinsburg High School. And last, but certainly not least, Shannon Thomas also teaches science at Twinsburg High School. Since we started our master teacher program here in Twinsburg a few years ago, this is our largest class ever, so congratulations to all of you guys.
Thank you very much. And before you leave this evening, I would really like for Mrs. Coslow to have a photo opportunity for you, maybe in the lobby area. This is an important career milestone for all of you, and we do appreciate all of the hard work, and to become a master teacher is not an easy task, and we recognize that, and we thank you. And so now, we have our retirees to celebrate, and I was remiss, I was supposed to ask Cheryl Willner to come forward to congratulate our employees on behalf of Mrs. Norris Sudoretti, who's out on a track with her child tonight. So Cheryl, if you can join us as representing TEA this evening, I would certainly do appreciate that. And we want to celebrate all of our retirees this evening, who have just been such a wonderful blessing to our school district. You know, some of you have been here for a short time, and some of you have been here for a very long time, and we often say that, you know, it takes a village to raise a child, and each and every one of you is an important part of our village, and we know that you play such an instrumental role of what we do every day. And obviously, you know, life will move on, and positions are filled, but your place can never be taken, the wonderful person that you happen to be and your influence on our students. So we wanted to say a few words about each of our retirees, and we're going to begin with a very important person at Twinsburg High School, our instructional assistant, Elaine has worked in our school district for 24 years as a paraprofessional, all those years, and she started working at Bissell, then moved to Dodge, then Chamberlain, and finally to Twinsburg High School. This means that she's worked in all of the schools in our school district with the exception of Wilcox. Ms. Bennet said that I don't know if I can point to any specific memory that's my favorite. It's always been about being with the kids and just being a part of all that means to be a part at the high school especially. And one of the things that she's going to miss most about retiring is she's so loved being a part of the students' learning experience and actually hearing an occasional thank you for explaining something that they just couldn't seem to catch any other way. And she's enjoyed working for the sporting events. You always see Ms. Bennet at girls' basketball. I would always see her sitting way up at the top, and she's a huge avid sports fan of our kids and a supporter of all of our programs. And that's where I first met Elaine, sitting in the bleachers over at Twinsburg High School for one of Coach Solos' basketball games, so I know she's true Blue Twinsburg. When asked what her plans were for the future, she said she plans to travel and spend time with her grandchildren.
Sue Durst, cook manager at Dodge Intermediate School. Mrs. Durst has been a cook manager with the Twinsburg City School District for 25 years. Prior to that, she worked for our district as a sub. Including her time as a sub, Mrs. Durst has been with Twinsburg City Schools for 26 and three-quarter years. Her favorite memory from her time in Twinsburg, well, she couldn't really identify one single memory as her favorite, but she did say she enjoyed her time working in the Twinsburg City School District. Miss Durst says that she will miss the people most, both the staff and the kids. When asked about her plans for the future, Miss Durst replied, "Live one day at a time."
And I know Sue said that she's going to miss the people, but I think the people are going to miss Sue because look at how many of the food service staff are coming tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for supporting Sue this evening. Our next retiree, I don't think she's here, Val Foster.
She is.
She is? Oh, my goodness, you are here. I didn't see you come in. Good, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. All right, well, that's awesome news. Val was here for 20 years. That's a long time working in our transportation department. She sure has seen a lot of miles on the yellow limousines, that I call them, and just making sure that students come and go, and we're very, very safe. We always appreciate all of Val's work. When we asked her what her favorite memory was of working in the school district, she said just being hired. And I think that that is just a remarkable thing to say. And when asked what her plans were for the future, she is enjoying traveling, and she just really wants to spend some great quality time with her family, and they're all here this evening. So congratulations to Val, we're going to miss you.
Patty Gracia, secretary to the business manager. Well, Patty has been working for, this is her 45th year now. She worked for the Twinsburg Schools for 25 years. Before coming to the school district, she worked at Twinsburg Banking Company, which is now First Merritt Bank, for 10 years. She started her career at the Community National Bank, where she worked in the work-study program at Warrensville Heights during her senior year in high school, and stayed at the bank for 10 years after she graduated. She can't pinpoint any one favorite memory of working here in the Twinsburg City School District. She loved her career here. She started out as a part-time receptionist and part-time curriculum secretary. After a couple of years, she became a full-time curriculum secretary. Then she became the secretary to the assistant superintendent, and finally, her current position as secretary to the business manager. She's had many wonderful memories from all of the positions she has held with the Twinsburg City School District. When asked what she would miss most once she retired, she says she will miss all of the many colleagues and friends she has made throughout the district in the last 25 years. She will especially miss her friends at Central Office. They were like a family to her because she spent so much time with them. They laughed, cried, celebrated, and supported each other through many of life's ups and downs. They were always there for each other. It was, it is, it was a wonderful place to work. When asked what her plans were, uh, for the future, her plans for the future include spending more time with her grandchildren. Because she was working, she missed all of those early years with her own kids, so she plans on making up some of that time with her grandchildren. She can't wait to go on her first field trip with her granddaughter, Jenna, and to be at Grandparents' Day for her granddaughter. Patty also has a son who lives in Arizona that wants her to come out and visit, so she is hoping to be able to make that trip one day soon. Maybe she'll wait until the snow flies next winter or next week, the way things have been going. Also, Patty is looking forward to learning how to relax. She is so programmed to getting up early in the morning and going to work. She thinks it's going to be an adjustment, but she's pretty sure that it won't, like, take too long to get over that. It's going to be rough, but she's pretty sure she's going to get fit her best suit. So congratulations, Patty.
Next, it's my pleasure to introduce Mrs. Connie Hill, fourth-grade teacher at George T. Dodge Intermediate School. Mrs. Hill has spent the last 22 years with the Twinsburg City School District. Prior to this, she spent seven years in the Columbus Schools. Additionally, she lived in California and worked as a substitute teacher, instructional assistant, homeschool teacher, and tutor. While with our school district, she spent three years at Bissell, and then now 19 years at Dodge. Mrs. Hill indicated that her favorite memory is when her students from previous years return and talk about their memories. In her own words, "The fact that I am still in the minds of children is very exciting. A few students who have heard that I'm retiring have come over to say hello and express that they will really miss me," and that's what it's all about. What will Connie miss most when she retires? And she says, "Many fond memories in being around the children and being at Dodge. The children, it has to be," she says. "I've been around children my whole life. I never wanted to do anything else but teach. The kids make me feel needed, and I have touched the lives of a lot of children since I have been here." Mrs. Hill shared that she has a keepsake box at home in which she keeps precious memories from her career. And her plans for the future, Mrs. Hill says she plans to work a lot around the house, probably going to be doing some of that tinkering that Mr. Rakowski wants to do, and many projects that need to be completed. She also plans to travel and see new places. In her travels, she plans on going to New York frequently to see her son, and Mrs. Hill is also sharing that one of her lifelong dreams is to someday open a special home for orphans. Her vision of this home would be a place where orphans would feel loved and share in her love of books and literacy. A couple of additional side notes, Connie says that she has two sons. The first is Christopher, who is a graduate of the L.A. School of Film and who is an author, and the second son, Todd, lives in New York and is a digital animator for Sky Blue Animation. And Mrs. Hill also shared that she may spend some time volunteering in a preschool or something else around children, and finally, she's also contemplating writing a book because both her husband and son are authors.
Brad Lewis, instructional assistant at RB Chamberlain Middle School. Mr. Lewis has been an instructional assistant at RB Chamberlain Middle School for five-and-a-half years after retiring from owning his own business. His favorite memory, like someone else here, was just remembering the day he got hired. What he will miss most once he retires is time with the students and staff. His plans for the future are to move to Chicago, read, cook, and exercise. Congratulations, Brad Lewis.
And I do believe, Ms. McKinney, Mr. Lewis has already moved to Chicago, that's why he's not here this evening. So he's out of town already. Our next retiree is Mrs. Kathy Newbold, who was our EMIS coordinator, and Kathy actually retired at the end of December, and the reason she's not here is she's out traveling and enjoying life. But a few things about Kathy, she worked for the school district for 16 and a half years, and before that, she was employed at Soulen Middle School for three years, and also at Baldwin Whitehall School District in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, for five years. That's why she was always in the office with those Steelers, you know, the colors, because that's where she came from. Mrs. Newbold's favorite memory occurred the first year she was the EMIS coordinator, and because she really clicked with that position and enjoyed all of the data and the technology that supports our EMIS work here in the school district. One of the things that she's going to miss most is her interactions specifically with the students and the staff. And her plans for the future, as I already indicated, she's already started, she's out traveling and enjoying life, so congratulations to Mrs. Kathy Newbold.
Diane Pfeifer, lunchroom playground assistant at Bissell Elementary School. Diane has worked for the Twinsburg City School District for 17 years, 12 years actually, 17 years total service. Prior to working for the Twinsburg City School District, she worked for Ohio Bell for five years. Her favorite memory from her time in the Twinsburg City School District is getting hugs from the children. They still provide her with those hugs when she sees them out in the community. What she will miss most when she retires, she will miss being with the children, the most of all. She missed it so much that she is currently back as a substitute so that she can see the children again. Her plans for the future are to help raise her grandchildren, one grandchild and one on the way, so. Oops, I'm sorry, and the one grandchild that's here already. So she is going to help raise two grandchildren at this point.
Next, we'd like to celebrate Geraldine Schmidt, and I don't believe I saw Miss Schmidt come in. Geraldine was a lunchroom playground assistant at Bissell before retiring earlier this year. She worked 17 years in our school district, and prior to working for our schools, she worked for the Ryder Stop &amp; Shop for three years. Mrs. Schmidt was shocked out of her shoes, this is her favorite memory, shocked out of her shoes when she found out that she was nominated as an Employee of the Month by one of the teachers, and she was just so grateful for that wonderful memory, and we celebrated with her here at the board meeting. One of the things that she's going to miss most is just the wonderful relationship she had with the staff at Bissell, and she'll miss her students, and she said that the students made a huge impact on her life. And her plans for the future include volunteering, traveling with her family, and she gets to work now with a guide dog. So congratulations to Mrs. Geraldine Schmidt.
Jeanne Spencer, janitor at RB Chamberlain Middle School. Jeanne worked 17 years in Twinsburg as a janitor, and she also worked for some time in Brooklyn and Brunswick City Schools as well. Her favorite memory is working with the disabled children as part of a work program. What she will miss the most once she retires is the laughter of the RBC staff. Her plans for the future are to enjoy every day to the fullest. Congratulations, Jeanne Spencer.
Next is Mr. Craig Taylor, social studies teacher at Twinsburg High School. Mr. Taylor has been working in our, for, in education for 34 years. He says that he has been fortunate to gain diverse experiences working in school districts located in different parts of Ohio. He worked for four years at the Alexander High School in Albany, Ohio, two years at Federal Hocking High School in Stewart, Ohio, and both of those schools are located in Athens County, and those school districts are rural and located in areas that are very impoverished, so he had great experiences working there where he taught social studies and driver's education. Then he went and taught two years at Eastmore High School in Columbus, Ohio, and Eastmore is an inner-city school, and most notably, the home of Archie Griffin. And while there, he had great experiences and a different approach to the challenges of educating young adults in a different kind of environment, and again, he taught social studies and driver education. And then Mr. Taylor further shared that he came to Twinsburg High School, and he spent the last 25 years at Twinsburg High School. And this actually occurred after a discussion that he had with his mother, and she told him Twinsburg High School is where he needed to be, and of course, he listened to his mom, and 25 years later, he's happy that he did listen to his mom because he's had a great influence on so many students at Twinsburg High School, and we do appreciate all that he has done in his years at our high school. His favorite memory and fondest memories are working with the kids that he coached and the coaching staffs that he has worked with throughout the many years that Craig's been here. And when asked what his, what he'll miss most when he retires, Craig answered that he'll miss the teachers who have become his friends at Chamberlain and Twinsburg High School over the years. And his plans for retirement, he's not quite sure. I'm sure it's going to be something exciting.
Jane Wagner, bus driver of Twinsburg City Schools Transportation Department. In 2002, she started as a substitute, then was hired as a driver and worked for 12 years. She also worked for Parks and Recreation Department for 13 years. Her favorite memory from her time in the Twinsburg City School District is when parents were happy because she made their children happy, and when she returned, the students lost the item, and the students were very happy and thankful to receive that item. She also enjoyed when kids wanted to do a picture with her at the end of the school year. What she will miss most about the school district once she retires is her coworkers. The transportation department, she said, was a good team. And her plans for the future, possibly moving out of the state and doing a lot of camping. Congratulations, Jane Wagner.
And our last retiree, who's already moved out of the state, is Mr. Roy Warren, who was assistant principal at Twinsburg High School. Roy actually left our staff and our Twinsburg family back in February, I think it was. Mr. Warren came into the education world from the business field, and he spent 17 years with IBM, and then he switched gears and pursued his master's degree and administrative license from John Carroll University while teaching at Beechwood High School. He was named the interim principal at Beechwood High School prior to coming to Twinsburg High School in 2006. Mr. Warren served as one of the assistant principals at Twinsburg High School for 10 years, and he had such great influence in those 10 years at our high school. Mr. Warren's favorite memory occurs each commencement ceremony when students are recognized for their years of academic achievement and contributions to the school and the community. When asked what he would miss the most, Roy answered that he'd miss two things: the relationships that he developed with staff and students over the years, and watching teachers practice their craft in the classrooms, as he's really learned so much about content and pedagogy from the teachers that he worked with. And his plans for the future, well, retired in February, Roy has already left. He's in sunny Florida with his best friend and his wife, Andy, and their two cats, Whitey and Spot, and we wish him well in Florida. And congratulations to Mr. Roy Warren. For class of 2016, you know, next week, we celebrate the graduates of 2016. Well, you're our graduating class into retirement, and as I said at the beginning of this, you know, life moves on, and there will be people that we employ to fill positions, but none of them will ever replace you and just the wonderful value you placed in being on the floor. just the wonderful value you placed in being an employee at the Twinsburg City School District. So I wish each and every one of you the very best. Please stay in touch, please come to the games and cheer our kids on and, and let us know what you're doing and what you're up to because you're an important part of our family. Congratulations.
And one last, one last comment, as HR Director, I want to extend an invitation to you all, we always need subs. So congratulations.
So, uh, at this moment, we will take a, a brief, uh, moment to, uh, recess, uh, and then we'll return in a few minutes. So, uh, please, uh, all who are here, please help yourself to the refreshments, uh, out front, and, uh, we'll return for the regular, uh, meeting. Oh, uh, so, I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Aho, uh, I'm sorry, uh, do I have a motion to recess?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we are at recess, uh, recess, uh, at, uh, 8:50. Okay, all right. So it's, uh, 8:05. Uh, Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mr. Solera?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Trow Waldron?
Here.
And Mr. Felber is absent. Um, we are on H, uh, committee reports. Uh, do we have any committee reports?
Building grounds, uh, will be meeting, um, May 31st. Yes, May 31st at 8 o'clock in the morning at the board offices.
Okay, any other, um, committee reports or updates? Okay, hearing none, we will move on. Um, Mr. Aho, do we have any cards for, uh, remonstrance?
Not this evening.
Okay, all right, move on to, uh, item J, is the treasurer's report. Uh, without objection from my colleagues, uh, I'll read, uh, J 1 through 3 altogether. Okay. Uh, resolve that the, uh, Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes, uh, the regular meeting of May 4th, 2016, as sent to the board under separate cover. Uh, J 2, financial report, that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the following financial report for the month of March 2016, blank bank reconciliation, general fund, financial summary report, and financial report by fund as sent to the board under separate cover. J 3, um, check register, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the check register for the month of March 2016, the total including payroll of $3,923,941.80. And J 4, updated five-year forecast, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the updated five-year forecast as sent to the board under separate cover. Do I have a motion? So moved by Mrs. Davis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Solera. Any discussion? Uh, hearing none. Uh, Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Trow Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. Uh, item passes for O, absent, Mr. Felber. Moving on to K, uh, without objection from my colleagues, I'll read K 1 through 3 altogether. Uh, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts certified slash licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the atta, in the attached exhibit as per the date's terms and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background check. Uh, exhibit K 1. K 2, that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the date's terms and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background check. Uh, exhibit K 2. And K 3, that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit per the date's terms and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Uh, do I have, do I have a motion for, uh, K 1 through 3?
So moved.
Uh, so moved from Mr. Solera. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Trow Waldron. Any discussion?
Board of Education, if I could intervene at this point, I just wanted to point out that this evening I'm recommending to you the contract renewals of five administrators. Um, Mr. Asti, assistant principal at Wilcox, Mrs. Johnson, principal at Bissell, Mr. Reese, principal at RBC, um, Ms. Villa, principal at, at Wilcox, and Mr. Winter, the assistant principal at, um, Bissell. And I just wanted to, um, to let you know that all five of these administrators are top-notch administrators. It has been a very busy year here in our, our school district, and they have exceeded expectation with regard to the performance that they have with our students. Um, we're very proud of, of all of our schools, in particular the three, um, buildings, um, that we're talking about this evening with the three leaders here, and of course, our high school and Dodge with Mrs. Turingo and, and Mr. Holland. But, um, I would be remiss if I just did not tell you how proud I am of these five administrators and the work they do to influence the achievement of students is, is, is some of the best that I have seen in my over 30 years in the field. So I appreciate, uh, your consideration of my recommendation for the renewal of all of their contracts. Um, you cannot go wrong by continuing their contracts. They are excellent administrators, professional folks, and, uh, truly a blessing to the Twinsburg City School District.
Duly noted. Um, any other comments? Okay, well, hearing none. Uh, Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Trow Waldron?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. Mr. Felber is absent, passes for O. Uh, moving on to item I, action items in new business. Uh, without further objection from my colleagues, I'll read I 1 through 6 altogether. Uh, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the donation from Ohio Pile Prints Incorporated, 410 Dinnerbell Road, Ohio Pile, Pennsylvania, uh, to Twinsburg, uh, High School in the amount of $41.36, as per the attached exhibit. L 1, I'm sorry, that's L, what did I say, I, or, okay. So L, uh, 1 through 6, my apologies for that. Uh, inventory deletions, media center, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the attached listing of media center items to be deleted from inventory per the attached exhibit, exhibit L 2. Um, L 3, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the affiliation agreement with the Lake Erie College to place teacher candidates in our district classrooms for the purpose of participating in field-based teacher education experiences for the period for years effective April 29th, 2016, as sent to the board under separate cover. Uh, 2016, 2017, excuse me, school breakfast and lunch prices. Four, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the proposed 20,000, uh, 2016, 2017 school breakfast and lunch prices as stated below. Excuse me. Uh, 2016, 17, uh, student handbook, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the 2016, 2017 student parent handbooks for the Twinsburg High School, RB Chamberlain Middle School, George G. Dodge Intermediate School, Samuel Bissell Elementary School, and Wilcox Primary School and Wilcox Primary School Integrated Preschool as sent to the board under separate cover. And six, settlement agreement and release Elizabeth Littler, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the settlement agreement and release with Elizabeth, uh, Elizabeth Littler as sent to the board under separate cover. Um, do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Davis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Trow Waldron. Um, any discussion? Um, Superintendent Powers, would you kind of give a little, a little, uh, explanation relative to the agreement for Lake Erie College?
Sure. Um, this is not unusual, this time of the year and moving into the summer months, will be requested, um, to have the Board of Education approve, uh, contracts or agreements with various universities and colleges for the purpose of allowing student teachers and practicum students to do some other field work in the school district. Any of us who have teaching license, Mrs. Davis could attest, Mr. Curtis as well, that when you're, um, in college and you want to become a teacher, you have to have practical field experience. And so this contract, uh, provides an opportunity for us to work, um, in a relationship with Lake Erie College.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other discussion or comments?
Um, can we just touch base a little bit on, we did have a, um, a committee meeting going over the handbooks and there were some changes, and I think probably the biggest one, um, was, um, and I know we had a little discussion at the last meeting, but could you go in a little more, just explain one more time, Mrs. Powers, um, the adjustment we made on the, um, 24/7/365?
Sure. Um, thank you, Mrs. Trow Waldron. As you know, um, when we met on the athletic committee meeting a couple weeks back, um, the primary purpose for that meeting was to talk about making an adjustment in the handbooks at Twinsburg High School and, and RB Chamberlain Middle School relative to students who participate in extracurriculars, um, and our athletic programs. And the current, the current language, the language that is in our handbook for this year and has been for many years, is that there is this 365-24/7 rule. So students who are, um, engaged in a situation, potentially if there were, um, drugs or alcohol involved in the summer months, the school district at that point would consequence the student for their participation in our athletic programs or extracurriculars based on, on that particular violation of the code. And when we took a look at other neighboring school districts, the districts that are in our suburban league and the old NOC league, uh, we recognized the fact that our, um, athletic and extracurricular, um, code of conduct was much more punitive than the neighbors and the others in the league. And so, um, Mrs. Turingo and Mr. Fantone, Mr. Schwed, Mr. Reese, um, worked together to create the language whereby, um, students who are participating in fall sports from the first day of, uh, fall sports practice, which is usually around August 1st, through the end of the school year, if they're participating in any activity or, um, athletic program, they're held accountable to the code of conduct. Um, for students who begin on affiliation with the program in the winter, it, um, that, um, penalty begins with the first day of school. So we're trying to be mindful and encouraging our students to follow the rules and to be good citizens and not to get engaged in certain kinds of activities, but at the same time, to be realistic, to say the school district has the long arm to deal with situations in the summer months really is quite unrealistic. And so that is the recommendation this evening that we have made, the adjustment to that particular part, specifically, um, of the high school and the middle school handbook.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Powers.
Welcome.
Any other, um, comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. Uh, Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Trow Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. Okay, uh, item passes for 0. Uh, moving on to M for miscellaneous, uh, do we have any comments or, um, anything to report on miscellaneous?
No, just congratulations to our graduates, who will be seeing, that's begun to say.
And, uh, one, one other thing, I just want to, uh, thank you to the, the PTA members in our district. Uh, had an opportunity to, uh, volunteer for the, uh, Surf's Up with the Dudes event at Dodge, um, that was put on, um, and then earlier in the year, I participated in the, uh, father-daughter dance, uh, which are both new, uh, new events put on by, uh, the members of Dodge PTA, and, and just a, just a fantastic, uh, event and a lot of planning goes into it. And I think, you know, when we look at a district as a whole, we look at all the, all the efforts that our administrators put in, that our staff put in, that our teachers and our students do, you know, sometimes the PTA and the parental involvement sometimes gets overlooked and, you know, just a, a kudos to, you know, especially, uh, the members that helped put together the Dodge, but all the PTA members in the district, just, you know, helps, helps really bring, bring together and every, helps everybody work as a team and, and, you know, allows for a lot of fun and, and fun events, and the kids had a blast. The, the sons that were there all had fun and, and the mothers, you know, all enjoyed spending the evening with their sons too, and it was just a very nice, nice event. So, thank you.
And, um, also to piggyback on that a little bit, um, the parents that, um, headed up the prom committee for the after-prom, um, I know a lot of the, the kids just really enjoyed, I know they put a ton of work into it, it was a great event, um, I heard so many good things from, I, I saw a lot of the moms afterwards and, um, a lot of the kids, and like I said, it was just a great event for our kids. It gives them something to do after the prom, it's an important, positive experience, so, very, very important. So, you know, hats off to our moms and dads that helped with that, so it was great for our, for our kids.
Awesome, and all, uh, with the culmination of, uh, graduation that, uh, you know, I'm sure everyone's looking forward to, and then summertime. So, uh, so absolutely. Um, any other comments on the miscellaneous?
Mr. Curtis, just, uh, to piggyback on Mr. Solera's comment, uh, soon you will see the class of 2016 signs popping up in our graduates' yards. That's thanks to our PTAs, the, the fundraising that happens, um, they give back to our families, and so that's one of my favorite things to see. And they'll be, um, I think posted beginning next Monday, so, uh, look for them to be out in our yards. And they have a new design this year, so it's a lot of fun.
Nice, nice, all right. Okay, well, we'll move on to N for executive session, and we do have a need, uh, to go into executive session. Um, the Board will, uh, of Education will enter into an executive session at, uh, 20 after, uh, to consider the employment and/or compensation of employees as per board policy, uh, 10166A. Uh, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Trow Waldron, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Solera. Uh, Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Trow Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. Okay, we're now in executive session, we do, will not have a need to reconvene. Thank you.